It'd be very nice to have that. I don't want to step on you.
Here's something else that, sorry, but, uh, look at that Serena. Edmund does that. They actually do a monthly planning report from all their commissions. It's on their website. It's open and available to everybody. And you can look and see, you know, they're working on a splash pad and misfarming. It's really excellent. And it's, you talk about transparency. It's, they have it for three years on their website and...
And right now, when the, the only time we see anything from the boards and the committees or whatever is if something needs to come before council.
Or the minutes online.
Yeah, the minutes online, but nothing comes before the council to tell them what, anything, what they did or whatever.
Right, good ideas.
Sometimes we need to know some of that stuff because some of that comes out later on. We need to know what they talked about, maybe what they did, whether we need to vote on it or not. It's, and again, that's where I go because several times it's come up and it's been very handy in front of the council because I knew what had happened. And so it helped out. So, right now, and until somebody overrides me, we can discuss it. But I just assume there'll be no restrictions on any, on any committee. That's my opinion. If you want to be on a committee, there's nothing says you have to own property, you have to be on another board or anything else to sit on a board. Now, that's kind of hard pressed. I know we've got a historical district that's real big, but that doesn't mean that people, you know, can't do what they're supposed to do. You know, I, I don't see why we need to on... So, that's one of those things if, if you need to think about it, you need to talk about it later on with Renee or with Serena, then we'll do it. But again, the only thing we're going to vote on tonight is getting rid of the voting members, ex-official voting members on our forestry board.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing something here. Is it not beneficial to, let's say, the historical preservation to have the input from these different people that are already dedicated to a part of Guthrie to see what they have to say? Or am I missing the point?
No, no, no. You're, you're correct. And some of these same people would be on there anyway.
But if we, if we put no restrictions and these people then were asked to leave and were starting clean, there may be some people on there that aren't knowledgeable and would make horrible decisions.
Then they've got the book that has been put together for the historical committee. When you go join the airport board, when you become on city council, you're starting out fresh sometimes. You're green, you're brand new.
True.
You may have to have some guidance. You may have to read a little lecture. The learning curve is there. I fully understand all those reasons why they're on there, but it, sometimes it makes it difficult to have people on a committee and then you get people that have been there forever. So if you go term limits, all of a sudden, you don't have anybody take their place.
Well, I, I agree to a point, but maybe we should limit it to one, uh, one representative from each of the different places. And then that still leaves room for the general citizenry. And it also gives the input that I think is necessary, but it, it does open more places.
Yeah.
Or am I totally off of the chart here?
No, no. So if we go with the historical committee, if it says two, we go to one?
Unless somebody can tell me where that's not...
Renee, you're with, you're with this.
Why are you trying to reduce it? I don't understand why you're trying to reduce it.
Well...
Well, I, he was wanting to open it to the general population more, at least that's my understanding, with no restrictions. And I kind of wondered if we didn't need some expertise in there representing some of the different boards that have something to do with that.
Right.
And if that leaves no room.
But this is not on the agenda tonight.
It's a workshop, boards and commissions. No, no, I'm waiting for y'all to tell me what you want.
I was, I just thought we were chatting about it.
Okay.
If we reduced it, would that be all right? Maybe?
Well, one, if I can interject here for a moment. The historical preservation commission is, is truly a unique one. And we work very closely with the, the state historic preservation office. They come and do an audit of us, I want to say about every two years. And one of the things that they'll do is pull the application or resumes of the board members to make sure that we do have a panel that is qualified to be on it, people who have that interest or expertise or training.
So does the state?
Now, I'm going to go back through and, and talk to them about that. We may...
Is that a requirement from the state?
I think we need to be really careful with that, especially with our...
Well, if that's a requirement from the state, then we need to look at that and see, you know, if, exactly what it is. It's just we're so restrictive that...
There may be, it may, we have been meeting everything that they require based on the historic preservation ordinance, what we call our red book. And we follow that and those guidelines and the ordinances it was written several years ago. If we are to reduce it, I would want to run that through the state before we make it final.
I would bow up on that, yes.
I didn't mean to. I mean, I didn't realize that there were restrictions, but it's nice to know.
Well, I believe that's the only one that's as restrictive. Yeah, yeah. HP is the most restrictive, I believe, of all of them.
Yeah, and it, sometimes it's hard to get the merchants and their building owners to do what they're supposed to do through HP. I mean, before, we had Charles Scott, I don't know if anybody, anybody knows him, but he was on HP and you didn't get away, you didn't do anything. If you did something, he saw it that next day and he was up here, he was, he had a letter. I mean, it was, you know, and it was nice to have that because now I think it's, well, you know, if somebody paints on their windows, well, maybe something will get done about it in a week or two. So it's nice to be, I think we need to be real careful and real strict with what we're doing in the preservation area.
I agree with that.
Because that's what we're all about.
So on the historical preservation deal, if we can get that checked out with the state historical deal, and y'all get back to us and let us know what their requirements are.
Yes.
But also let them know we think it's a little, I think it's, this council thinks maybe it's a little restricted. We need some more citizens in there.
Yeah, it runs the gamut from a lot of people wanting it to be as restrictive as possible to, I'll be quite honest, some business owners who say, I want to run my business, why are you doing that?
Yeah.
Now, people do put the business in a historic district for the reason that it is historic. And so we have to maintain those historic guidelines in order to keep the district historical.
So the other three, they're pretty loose.
Yeah, on the other three, if we could, if you'll look at them individually, look at the ordinances, two of them have five members, one has seven. Look at those for planning purposes and we'll go ahead and move off of this one and get on to the other parts of the agenda. But understand that this is all coming from me that after getting to these things and seeing how they all operate differently, and it's hard for some people to even get on the committees and they want to be there, just looking for a little bit better and make them all the same so we can appoint them and remove them if we need to. And, and just do it better. All right? Okay, let's go on. And so item three, discussion regarding automatic meter.
How are you doing? Pretty good. Hello, everyone. Aaron's going to bring something up here.
How you doing?
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Russ with UTS. We do census metering. We started your meter project back in January, February.
There it is.
Uh, Jason Henderson's our project manager. So as you see, everything in the blue, that's what we've installed so far. We're at twenty-two hundred meters. Projected about thirty-eight hundred. Projected to be done by May eighteenth. So, um, the way it makes it so easy for us is your city staff and your condition of your meter pits and everything that's out there. Most cities aren't up to par what you guys are. So it makes it a lot easier for us to move quickly and to meet the projected timeline you guys have. So, just an update we have for you. But if you have any questions about, you know, for Jason, he's out in the field, he talks to your citizens, he does work with your staff, and so he can address any questions that you guys might have for him, so.
Any real problems so far?
No.
No, sir. Not at all. It's been an exceptional experience so far. The city staff and, and the residents have been great, very helpful.
So other than the snow?
You know, the snow delayed us a little bit, but not much, so.
They're out there in freezing cones.
Yeah.
As for reeds, all of them are coming in. We have two or three that aren't, so we'll go look at those, so.
Are we reading them in the city yet or is it just them?
We're still reading and we'll, a mix.
Right, I mean, but do we have the program that, that can look at them and everything?
And it's already doing that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're still using our regular meter reader until such time as that all comes online?
Yeah, he's reading them here.
Yeah, we're catching up to them, so today we did our first filling of those.
He's kind of phasing out.
Right, okay. Okay, so he's doing less.
Yes.
Or doing more.
All right, all right.
So, it's working well.
They're right on his heels.
I have a question. I don't know if it necessarily concerns them or not, but in the past, we've had people who have water, but their meters are not read, they're hidden, they're buried, they're covered, and nobody knows their meters are there. And they say, oh, I've never had to pay a water bill in my life. How do we, uh...
We're finding them.
Are you finding them now? All the stuff on them? Okay, good.
He's got a part of that revenue stream.
Okay, because I know they're out there.
Yeah.
Maxine says we found about three thus far.
Have you? Okay, good. Yeah, that, I mean, that's worth it right there if you get some non-paying citizens there.
Because they usually don't come tell us.
Yeah, they're not going to tell you.
Anything else we can do for y'all?
No, we're good. It's a good job.
They're volunteer, do they?
Working good?
Everything's been great so far. Yes, sir.
They've been great. They've been amazing.
I guess kudos to your staff and all the people that have been out there working with them. Thanks. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Uh, item number four, economic development annual update.
Thank you, Mayor. A little bit quick, I want to send these around if you come up to mine. One is the sales tax up to date. I know that Serena gets you them monthly whenever we receive them.
Sorry.
And another is a retail incentive block that the city council passed in 2011. I know council member Kaufman is very familiar with this, but the other few members present are new and worked around when, when this was passed, and so we want to at least address this. Economic Development Marketing Department, I'm it. I'm, I work both, both departments, and so it's, it's a lot of fun. We're, we're kind of the proactive department that gets to, gets to go out and really shine a light on the city, market the city the way it needs to in order to grow, grow the sales tax base, grow the tax base in general. So, I mentioned the retail incentive policy. You'll, you'll look over that. It, it just mentions that council approved the right to incentivize a retail development coming in, whether it's a new store or entire new complex being built with multiple stores. If you have any questions later on, I'll be more than willing to help with anything I can. We'll move on real quick to kind of the recruiting phase. We use several different resources. Events like International Council of Shopping Centers, online platforms like Retail Lease Track. Retail Lease Track basically puts every month where new stores are looking to grow, what their requirements are as far as traffic counts, rooftops within a certain, a certain radius, those types of things. Leads, we get leads from the Oklahoma City, Greater Oklahoma City Chamber Partnership, local realtors in town. And I communicate a lot with several different entities, site selectors, again, realtors not only in Guthrie but in the Oklahoma City area as well. We're currently working with one out of Oklahoma City for a project, looking to hopefully get some new stores in here along the I-35 and Highway 33 corridor. Hopefully, we can announce that this year. Real quick, some of the targets that we are going after. We're hearing a lot of Guthrie ask for a different grocery option. And it's kind of escalating to many other different factors. Grocery, they're saying, yes, gas prices are high, but we have to go down to Edmund to shop for grocery anyways, and so it's not, it's not that hard to get everything else while you're always, while you're already down there. I think that that grocery domino will be very big for us. I'm hoping that we can, we can land a new, a new project in, in the very near future. Retail, we're looking at downtown and outside of downtown. I mentioned the I-35 and Highway 33 corridor. I think that looking forward, I-35 and Seward Road will be a major, major player as well. Downtown, we've got a lot of interest right now. It goes in and out of phases right now. Today was spent primarily on downtown. Lots of different people looking, different, wanting to know about different spaces, who has commercial kitchens, who has a certain amount of square footage for them. We've seen a lot of entrepreneurial efforts in our downtown right now. That's kind of a target that we're also hitting, the creatives and entrepreneurs, those people that are willing to take some risk. We're seeing a lot of people, a lot of these entrepreneurs see Guthrie as a test market and, you know, how well can they do here with a little bit cheaper rent than what you might find down in the city, a little bit, maybe a smaller square foot, those kinds of things. But using Guthrie as a test market, one of our newest restaurants is kind of treating us as that right now, and so we're thrilled to have them. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're leaving, they're just, they, they know that growth is on the horizon for their business and they, they want to test out and see how well their product's doing here first. We'll move on to incentives. Through Department of Commerce, the state is able to offer incentives like Grow OK, Quality Jobs Program, which a, which a local manufacturer in Logan County actually received last year. Those, those types of initiatives right there in order to just land those kind of 21st century new technology jobs. The, the state kind of, due to, you know, the funding issues with municipalities and everything like that, the state kind of handles those, those types of incentives for, for us. So that's great to have. Again, targeting entrepreneurs, initiatives like I-2E, Innovation to Enterprise, helping startups get seed funding and those types of things. Those are really, really great to have at our command. We work with Josh O'Brien with I-2E. He is the Director of Entrepreneurial Development. He, he loves Guthrie right now. He loves the direction that we're going and he's been a big help over the last couple of weeks, actually. So, incentives for retail. There's a lot of different things that we can, that are available to municipalities for us to offer. I've talked about the sales tax rebate earlier, a topic that's been really, really coming up hard lately is the Tax Increment Financing District or TIF district. Not only can you do those with property tax, but you can do those with sales tax as well. Kind of helps when you have a multi, multi-store development. It kind of cleans it up a little bit, makes it a little bit easier to get done instead of having to go back and pick which store gets what, that kind of thing. So TIFs are available for that. And I threw in free dirt as well. You know, if, if cities own any land and they want to offer that land up as an incentive, that is also allowed through the state. Moving on to planning, I certainly am very thankful for how well Renee and I work together and all of the community development department. She, she kind of looks towards how to make some of the things happen for the people that we're bringing in specifically. She's helped me recently with some initiatives in downtown. You know, Noble Avenue north of downtown, these are things that, that were mentioned in the incentive document, which Renee and Matt, when he was here, actually were a part of teaming up to create. And so these are kind of the target areas that you're looking at. I mentioned I-35 and Seward. It's actually not mentioned in this document. Doesn't mean that we can't offer something. It just meant that it was on the, on the cover letter in the executive summary. It wasn't mentioned specifically back in 2011. So these are kind of the areas that council wanted to hit specifically. Downtown, Noble Avenue, north of downtown, South Division, Division, I-35 and Highway 33 interchange. Downtown focus, you all know about the Downtown Improvements Committee that is looking to find best ways to utilize the incremental revenue generated from Mumford and Sons weekend. Business Improvement Districts, those are very, very common kind of in the Northeast. It's basically a self-assessed tax on either property owners or businesses specifically to where they pitch in and want to get some things done in, in their area, either beautification or something like that, if they want to fast-track those types of items, they can do that through a self-assessed tax. I talked about a social kind of media. We're seeing some great, great strides for getting the word out about Guthrie through social media platforms like Facebook and Twitter, Instagram. One of my favorite things to do on a weekend is to just look at Instagram and Twitter and look for hashtag Guthrie OK to see what's going on and what people are really enjoying. We actually found out about a incoming business through that hashtag. Very excited for them to get up and running. Hopefully, the, the plan is for them to work specifically online, but hopefully we can get them into retail storefront soon. But again, that social media is kind of how we're learning about them, how we can reach out to them, how we can get them on the ground running as, as quickly as possible. Property inventory. We, we use a lot of different sources like LoopNet and Oklahoma City EDIS, talking about what kind of property we have available in town, whether it be an already constructed building or land. Those platforms are there for us and really, really help. Partnerships with the merchants in the chamber. The chamber and my office kind of recreated the, the merchant meetings every month. And so those are, get people talking, get people, get neighbors sharing ideas, those kinds of things. And so we're very excited for that, that success so far. Special events. Real quick, in order to promote tourism alongside the Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Department has budgeted money to help facilitate community events this year in an effort to maintain a high level of quality of life to citizens. Means that events that are ongoing can come out and reach out to my department and just say, can we, can we do this kind of project? We're looking for this kind of assistance. Eighty-Niner Days, I know that they typically film the, film the parades or any parade that we need filmed. That's kind of what this was originally dedicated for. And then recent success, we've had through our partnership with GTV20 and Aaron Ryber, and he does such a great job with the Business Spotlight. Aaron and his volunteers were highlighting businesses like we haven't ever before. This was initiative that we started back in January of 2013, going under a little bit of a revamp at this point, but we're excited to roll out a new, new idea that we have for it. We were a part of Small Business Saturday this past November where we're promoting those entrepreneurs and those small business owners for retail environment. So, twelve new retail businesses opened, including businesses that have filed permits. King's Donuts was a, was a recent opening. I know that they've, they've kind of got a following all of a sudden, and so we're, we're very excited for them. Six business expansions. I think of the guys at Prairie Wolf Spirits who have just recently launched their second product in, in less than a year. And it's the Prairie Wolf Dart, the Coffee Laker. Tipsy Artist went from a smaller footprint to a larger footprint. Victorian, Victorian Tea Room now owns their building. Those are things that we're, we're very excited to celebrate with those business owners. Hoboken Coffee Roasters employees, three new employees within their first fifteen months. These are, these are major, major wins for a town of 10,000 and a small, and a, and a small business in general. So we're very excited. Also want to celebrate that we will be the host town for the City Managers Annual, City Managers Association of Oklahoma Annual Summer Conference this year. Very excited for that and very excited to put Guthrie on display through that event. Any questions?
All right, so what you just went through was an update and upgrade from this thing?
Part of it.
No.
That was a re, we just want to, we always like to remind y'all, that's just a reminder that you have a policy on retail incentives. So you were just telling one...
Three, three of you at this table were not around and a policy was done, so it was just kind of...
So this is what exists and you're expanding, I mean, you're, yeah.
I have one. I'm just curious about the grocery store supermarket thing. Have you done a study on that or...
We've been hearing it from a lot of, a lot of different avenues, a lot of people just coming banging on my door.
Citizens Academy.
Facebook.
Citizens Academy, that's our number one.
Citizens Academy.
Because we've had three in the past and we have two now, but they want another one.
Yeah, they do.
And the third, the one that closed, why did it close?
What was that third one?
Oh, my thought about Jim's IGA. Homeland bought all the IGA's.
Didn't Albertson's buy out, they said Safeway, but is that the same thing as Homeland?
No.
So they won't be here.
And so I, I really do believe that, yes, we do see the, the issues with sales tax leakage, but if people are saying that they're going down because they don't think that they have a grocery option available, I think that if we can give them a grocery option that they're actively seeking, you know, brands that they are, that they believe have a positive image, I think that we can keep them in Guthrie longer, make that drive to Edmund a little bit...
A little bit harder to make.
A little bit harder to drive.
Have you seen the, that leakage report that they did when Melody was here?
It's actually on the brochures that I passed out at ICSC last year, so. And again, that's International Council of Shopping Centers.
Was that in Vegas?
That was in Vegas.
Right.
Every May.
Did you have any luck when you went there?
Not any luck. I'm, I'm trying to evaluate whether it's a worthwhile trip this year or not.
Do you need me to go with you to make sure?
Yes.
You know, I think that for us to, to expend that kind of, that money, I think that we have to have really a lot of ducks lined up in a row. Right now, there are some things falling into place, but I don't know that they're going to be falling into place quickly enough for us to make that trip again this year. We, through the Oklahoma City EDIS platform, we've seen a tremendous increase. If you look at I-35 and Seward over the last year, there have been 15,000 new rooftops built within a 10-mile radius, just in the last year. It was recently updated about five weeks ago, from what I understand, and those numbers are really, really jumping. And so those are, those are great numbers. I would love to see it kind of grow a little bit north before we make that trip to Vegas for ICSC again. There are other ICSC events. Oklahoma City has started one through some members with Moore and Edmund Economic Development Association, Dallas also, or Texas typically hosts one as well.
Basically, we need infrastructure in order to get these people here, right?
Well, development agreement or TIF.
We, we need, we need action. We need, we need some dirt turned over. We have, we have infrastructure right now, I think specifically of near the hotels on 35, the sleep-in and, you know, where we recently got a building permit for, or a site plan development for. There's 16 acres kind of tucked in back there that would make perfect for a big box store.
Yeah, it would be great to get something.
And we already have infrastructure.
We have infrastructure there. It's just a matter of, and we've been in contact with a couple of big box stores about that site over the last week.
Yeah, we need to see some development over there for sure.
Well, and that's, that's the problem is they want to see more, more development themselves. They don't want to be the, the ones that...
They don't want to be the...
Right, but if they were to see two big truck stops over on another side, that would probably make a really big difference, too. And are, where are we on that? I'm going to open up a can of worms, but...
I'll respond. We've met with both of them. If you're talking about the truck stops on that...
Yes.
Requested, we've given them information to even request annexation. We provided them all those documents. We requested for them to put in writing what they were, what they want us to do. It is outside the city limits. So everything sits in their court right now to, to make a request. The county currently sits at a, they voted to move forward with forming a committee to do a TIF. There's kind of two sides of a TIF. One, you have to establish the district and then you set up the financing. And so we've talked to both of those businesses about joining the county with that if we're so asked to do so. I've talked to both of them about development agreements. Development agreements would basically, and I'll do it in kind of a broad brush, so let's just, I'll, I'll use sales tax. We obviously don't take in property tax. So let's say that one of those businesses revenues the city, I'll just use broad numbers. They revenue the city $2,000 a month in sales tax. What a development agreement would do is say, this council could, without doing a TIF and without going through the whole, it's quite a bigger process than a development agreement. They could say, the city could say, we're going to take 1,000 of that dollars, that 2,000 that you make us, and we'll, without a better term, scroll it away, put it in account, and then, you know, the other 1,000 goes to our general operations, and then and then at the end of the year, you've now accumulated twelve thousand dollars into this account, and then we give you back twelve thousand dollars for, let's say, three years." So three times twelve, we're at, what, okay, half of six. So at the end of three years, they have back thirty-six thousand dollars cash check from the city, and that's, that helps pay them back for whatever it is that they did. So, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollar project. That would be the city saying, without going through a TIF, "We're gonna give you thirty-six thousand dollars, but let us wait. If you can invest in the capital, we'll give it back to you." And the way that you make the rules on that as a council to guarantee, number one, that the place doesn't go up in fire and doesn't make any sales tax. You put in rules that say you must make X. You can even put rules in like, "You must employ this many people. You must be open this many hours." You can, sky's the limit on a developer agreement. You can put whatever it is that you want to do, and then you can rebate them money. What we do for those types of locations, do our research on how much sales tax we anticipate them to make. We also take a look at their employ, what, how many employees. We take a look at what their water sales is gonna be. We take a look at what their sewer sales is, and then we get a good picture of what they can do. But we can't do that without them providing us some information. That's why we ask for, for numbers. Um, and so with them, and, and, for example, the one on the north side, we had that in detail conversation. So I said, "If, if there's something that you would look at doing a, I call it a rebate. I mean, it's a sales tax rebate, really is what a developer agreement is, if you do it that way." If they wanna enter a sales tax rebate, uh, they're welcome to pitch us, uh, what it is that they need. Um, we anticipate the, the sewer being about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. They're saying maybe three-hundred thousand, so I'll, I'll just use the, let's use three-hundred thousand. Would the city be interested in saying, "We'll rebate you a hundred thousand over three years. You're paying two, we're paying a hundred," you know, whatever it might be. So I've asked them to tell me, "What is it that you want?"
And with that, the developer agreement along with a TIF.
It could be.
They're getting money back from their property tax.
Can they do both?
Yes.
They can do a TIF and both.
So the county can help, the city can help, and it just depends on...
Or the TIF could be a sales tax and property tax combo, um, which we've seen counties and cities do. And so that might be a way to do it. Let's say that, let's say the county, I have no idea if they're looking at both right now. They can even do property and sales tax. Remember, they take one penny. So they could do it in the TIF, and the city could then pony up through the TIF with our sales tax, obviously not property tax, or separate in a development agreement. It'd be a lot easier, probably, if we just did the TIF with them, but if that TIF doesn't move forward, I, 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 I hope that there's a way to communicate a development agreement.
Okay. I had a question. Um, I think Love's, right, is gonna be one of the stores up there on the other side that they're building, right? So what is gonna happen to the old Loves? Are they going to...
It's gonna stay there just like it is.
It's gonna stay there in business.
Yes, that's a good change.
On that side.
We, we can't, we can't steal from a private company what they're going to do.
Well, 'cause, well, 'cause I ask, if, if they go, go out of business on that side, like, close it, that means there's gonna be a blank, you know, empty infrastructure there. And it, it seems to me that we need to think about, is it better for it to be knocked down and it be open? Are they gonna do something with it, or, you know, what's gonna happen there? I'd just be worried that we have an empty...
We don't, we don't know officially, but I can tell you, just based on trends all around the country, uh, a successful truck stop like what we're, what we see with that Loves would not stay vacant very long.
Okay, so somebody could replace it.
It's one of the highest-revenue owing restaurant in, in the state of Oklahoma. For, I'm sorry, restaurant for...
So it might be, you could argue it'd be an attractive site, 'cause it's already a, a box.
Sure, you'd think somebody would buy it.
Yeah, okay.
If there are no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number five, discussion regarding agenda items. Any questions left on those?
You know, we do wanna thank, uh, Vice Mayor Wood for bringing up, I believe it was you Vice Mayor Wood that brought up the OKC water line. I, I think it was on those meetings, and, um, we sent Randall on a chase and Wanda on a chase to see if we could use that funding. And because it's a consent item, and we probably won't discuss it, I wanna thank you because, um, that is the funding source that we're going after to fix a very major problem that we have with wastewater plants, so, um, thanks.
Uh, number six, request for future items of discussion. Anything out there right now? Item number seven, we're adjourned.